All right.
I just took the options.
It's not necessary for the businesses.
I've got an upfront question.
Okay.
I broke with 4.3, right?
I believe so.
And was the budget done like a 4% or?
As far as increases?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I asked them to keep it under, under four.
Under four, okay, that, just so that everybody understands where we're coming from.
Not that they listen, but.
I.
What'd you say, the growth? What's your one?
It was 4.3.
Okay.
That's what we got from the state.
Okay.
And what Karen asked all the department has to do is keep their increases under four.
Right.
So, not that they're gonna.
Okay.
Listen, but.
Well, it's not that they're.
I understand.
Listening, but.
They're listening, not that that.
Are, except for some of the needs are greater than.
As we'll see, then, some needs are greater.
Funds or whatever you want to call it. I don't judge.
You want to start with, you want to start with Park? What do you want to start with?
Start with Park, because I don't see any, the Terry's will be here between 4:00 and 4:30. He's working his, his job, so he had to leave, because he was going to have to leave early, so.
Okay.
We try to be going at four.
Okay.
All right, shall we then?
You're up.
All right, does everybody have a part of them?
Yep.
Um, so the only, I can just run through everything, but from 2021, the only thing that you'll see is really, really off is obviously the building improvement one, but that was for the sidewalk project that we had come in and asked for initial appropriation for and got approved. That's the only one that's pretty significant. Other than that, you'll see the superintendent expenses that went over. That was all just professional development related, specifically for the graduate school toss. So, we planned, we budgeted for that for 2022. We just didn't, at the time, intend to make those payments beforehand. Other than that, though, everything is pretty spot on. The pier repairs, we just had a few more than usual, which then we budgeted the same for next year, because then we shouldn't have as many pier repairs for 2022, since we did a good bid this year.
What's causing the pier repairs?
What?
What's causing the pier repairs?
Wearing tears. I mean, they're pretty old, to be fair.
That's what I'm getting at.
Yeah, like, I think almost a decade old. Um, and when we went out this year and checked on them, there's just a few more holes than usual on, because last year was mostly the swim gear and the courtesy pier.
Okay.
We did a lot of fixes there, and then, so then this year, on the flip side, it was our both peers that had a few fixes that were needed, but it wasn't terrible. But since we've updated them last year and then updated the both years this year, we don't expect to have to make a ton next year.
You're requesting $5,000 more for lawn maintenance?
Yes, uh, so the reason behind that is I, one of the projects we would like to incorporate for next year is, I don't, I don't know if anybody knows, but in front of the Culver sign, the grass there is basically not grass, it's all, it's all rock. And I got quoted out by sellers, and I, you know, just a guesstimate of what that project would be to totally flip that specific area, and it came out to be about 3,000. So, on top of what we already do, we're requesting for the 55, I'm sorry, the 10,000 for next year.
Could you do that?
We could, yes. Yeah, and then we would for the project, yeah. We were just kind of getting a guess, like, an estimate of what it would be for 2022.
You cut the grass yourself, your, your crews cut the grass.
Yeah, that's right.
But this is basically for repair, is that correct?
Yeah, total repair of the section of grass that's from, so the main sidewalk, heading down to the lighthouse, all the way to the mulberry tree, that section of grass. We wanted to prioritize it, since it's kind of the main part of the park. A lot of people take photos there. It's just looking really, really poor right now.
Things are broken out for landscaping, for the pier installation, and some of the other services.
That's, yeah, that's another thing we have to consider, sorry, for the shoreline at the piers. We had to knock that down last fall. Um, I don't think we'll need to do it this year, but we'll probably have to do it next year, and it's $2,000 to do that. So, between the, um, the landscaping of the grass by the Culver sign and the shore knockdown, that puts us at about 5,500.
What's included in contract services, since landscaping is separate, pier installations are separate? Um, there's an increase of $5,000 in.
Yeah.
In contracts, so what services are those?
Yeah, so I mean, that's any, so swim outlet, that's a lot of, um, equipment for our lifeguard, equip, uh, equipment for our lifeguards. Um, a big one is Cintas, uh, they do a lot of stuff for us now. We transferred over to Cintas, so that's why there's an increase there, which has been incredibly helpful. Um, I can pull up more.
That's fine, but the contract services that are.
Yeah.
Are uniformed.
The IT.
Yes, outdoor management.
Got it, okay.
Yeah.
The, um, monthly recurring costs.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, other than that, uh, we, like I said, we did increase the superintendent expenses by 2,000. That is because, uh, we are anticipating I'll stay in school, so.
We're anticipating what?
That I will stay in school, graduate school. Um, and then, other than that, we're just suggestions by Karen, a thousand dollars increase for insurance and bonds, telephone increased by 1,300, and then long debits is 25. And then the only thing else that stands out, because obviously the $50,000 increase, but that's for the regional stellar match that we have to make, so.
That's on the regional stellar park project, which is different than the Culver.
That's the significant one, increase.
Oh, regional, okay.
Yeah, and then, building improvements, we bumped that up to 25 to 30. We, as you guys know, we've been applying for some grants for that basketball court renovation. We tried the ARP grant, we weren't lucky. We're currently going through the ready grant, hoping we can get some funds there. And then, we're considering trying out patronicity, patronicity, uh, to get those funds. We are just thinking, worst case scenario, if we don't get any funding for that renovation, we budgeted for it, because we really want to see that go through, because we put in the new benches, the planter box, the new basketball hoops are coming in. We want the service to match all the improvements we're making over on that side as well.
50,000 for the, uh, regional stellar, that's a one-time match?
Yes, oh, well, yeah.
Probably go into a second year, though.
Yeah.
The application.
50 again, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a, is it 600?
It's a $600,000 project.
Yeah, we matched 200.
You got a nice player, so you got 100, okay.
Yeah.
So that's our match?
Yeah.
Okay.
Have you approached CRC about?
We have not yet, no.
Part of that match, I mean, it's quality of life, quality of place.
Yeah, exactly, that, yeah, that's the plan.
Okay.
Approach them a lot.
Yeah.
As opposed to, um, taking it out of operations?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm not familiar with that, what are they, what are you doing?
We're completely renovating the playground on the west end, so it's two sections right now, so you have where the dinosaur is and a wood structure. Uh, we're gonna get rid of the playground that is in front of the pavilion where the purple dinosaur is. And completely get rid of that and landscape it and put sidewalks in, so that the farmer's market's ADA accessible. And then, the playground will be entirely where the wood structure is, which will include, um, a new main play structure, some slides into the hill, and then also a central gathering space there as well.
ADA accessibility and multi-generation.
For everything, yeah, you have a bocce ball court. Um, the surface will all, instead of the tires you see now, it'll be a flat surface. And then, we also asked them to include some lower ser, some lower play structures, so that's ADA accessible.
Does it include restrooms?
It does, it does not.
Hmm, why we didn't include that in this?
Um, because.
It's not a million dollars?
Yeah, playgrounds cost about, I'm sorry, restrooms cost about $150,000 to put in, um, which wasn't originally part of the project, and I don't know that Okra would be particularly interested. They're giving us the money to do it, um, and that's what we applied for, for the grant, I don't know.
They're not, they're not big on bathrooms.
They're not big, yeah. If you're asking someone to donate, playgrounds are more appealing.
But also, it being part of regional stellar, that pool of money, Culver was going to probably get the smallest slice of it, just because we had done stellar and won it ourselves. So really, what was left in that pool of money was 600,000, so the scope of that project had to be around that, you know? Um, and I wouldn't be surprised if the, when we go to construction on that finally, if the bid's coming a lot higher, just because we're seeing that across all the regional projects. Breaman's bids have come in higher, like, all of them seem to be coming in higher, but that's just the cost of construction. And with those federal grants, you have to pay the Davis wages, making wage, wages, so they come out higher anyway. Now, if one of the projects that's before us comes up under, and it frees up some dollars, Culver would be able to get some of those, but so far they won't come in over.
Yes.
The Reese Theater project came in 600,000 over, I think, or something. So, yeah, I'm sure they'd love to take our project off the table, but.
So, the, the, the grant is 600,000?
Yes.
Okay, and we have the math, what?
20, 20.
20%, okay, thank you.
And you can do, like, the application will go in this fall. Okra will probably release funds by end of calendar year or first of next year, and then you get 12 months to complete it, unless you take an extension, and they only allow you, like, a six-month extension. So, our matching portion can go over two calendar years typically with a Culver project. So you do part of the match now, you do part of the match later, and if CRC wants to contribute, you know, it can be separate pools of money, it doesn't have to be one pool of money.
Is the pickleball court in that, or is that?
That is.
Still in the future?
That is part of the building improvements project, though.
It is part of.
The grant, yeah, it would be, um, like I said, we weren't lucky with ARP, we were flying to the ready grant, and then, then check out patronicity, see if there's potential there, but if not, uh, the pickleball and basketball court will come in with the building improvement.
Okay.
That project's too small to go for Okra, and we can combine it with the other one.
So it's already in here elsewhere, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
They might have combined it, have we conceived of it back then, but I doubt it.
Yeah, we, I talked briefly with Mike Reese about it, and they said we'd probably be extending the project and changing it too much than what we had already previously proposed.
Understand.
They don't like that.
Yeah.
Counsel, I have any other questions?
What's the material of the wood made out, or the pier, is it wood?
No, it's, uh, no, it's like a plastic material.
Actually vinyl fencing.
Yeah, that's right, yeah, vinyl, yeah.
And so that deteriorates, gets holes in it?
It, it's mostly, yeah, so it's hollow, you know, there's like one piece and it's hollow, and then another piece.
Yeah.
Usually just people walking over it wearing tear, it'll just, most of their cares are done just between the, uh, the two sections.
Over timing vinyl, especially since it's being used as pure planking versus fence boarding, which is what it was originally designed for. And, and I guess one of my questions is that, um, if that's 10 years old, we should probably be looking at a scheduled replacement cost over time. Um, I don't, that, that, the, the way the piers are designed, it's all interchangeable, they're exactly the same size. But to take the better sections and, um, and consolidate them in one area, take the other ones and rebuild them perhaps over two or three years.
Yeah, we've been replacing them a little bit, but, yeah, no, it's probably not near the degree.
But I mean, probably some point in the next five years, um, we need to probably set a replacement where over three years, we've replaced just about everything.
Yeah, right.
So.
I would look at the durability of different materials and the cost, obviously.
Yeah.
Just make sure that, maybe we can shed some of those things' costs.
Yeah, right.
Change materials.
Yeah.
I'm gonna go back just a second, so that I have a better understanding and wrap around this. There, with $600,000 grant, we have a 20% match, so that's 120,000. Okay, so, what, we have to do this over a, a two- or three-year period? So we're doing 50 this year?
Yeah.
Why wouldn't we do 60?
We could, yeah.
So I mean, do it in two years instead of?
Yeah, I think we just.
I mean, I'm not advocating spending money, but I'm just trying to think, that would make it a three-year match versus a two-year match.
I mean, based on the timeline, too, it kind of needs to be two, based on Okra, as we say within Okra guidelines.
Well, and what are you trying to accomplish? You're trying to accomplish 100 from the town and then 20 from CRC, I mean, what?
Uh, yeah.
I mean, were you doing 50/50, and you were anticipating the other 20 to come from CRC, or?
I think we were hoping 50 from us, 50 from, 50% from CRC, but.
Okay, well, then, then I could go with Bill and say.
Yeah.
60 and 60.
It depends on if, they're still debating some of the other projects that we approached them about. I think they've finally got an accurate picture of their own finances to decide on that, but that was sort of part of the holdup, was they were doing this financial dashboard, uh, and that just came out at their last meeting, so I think it's time we could. And I did approach them on some of the trail costs, you know, the phase two trail costs, phase three. So, we're currently kind of just fighting off chunks of the elephant with CRC right now.
Well, I, I don't have a problem with doing 60 and 60. Yeah, I would think that's a better way to do it.
Okay, yeah. That works great.
William?
Well, technically it'd be 62 and 5, right? So it'd be half of the 125, which is.
120.
120.
120.
Oh, oh, okay.
But you would be right on the other.
It's very, it's very. Shame on me, math problem.
Well, no, very well could be that when this goes to bid, if, if, yeah, if it bids out, instead of that 720,000 total project cost, it could end up bidding out at a million, and then we have to change the scope.
Sure.
To make up the gap.
Right.
So that might be, the other thing is, we go to CRC with what we think it's gonna be, but if it goes like a lot of these other projects, we may end up with a gap.
But I think, just for budget purposes, we just go in.
Yeah.
Even Steven, for the next couple of years. Rich?
I'm fine with that. I, I do think we should approach CRC relatively quickly on making a commitment on this. I mean, I think I, their cash flow, uh, you know, they're, they're taking half a million dollars a year, and.
I think they did commit to the new trail projects that were regional stellar when we did the grant for the small businesses.
Yeah.
So.
There was.
Yeah, at least we know that that's on there.
For phase three trails.
Well, how much money do they have?
They get about a half million dollars a year, just about. That's seller, yeah.
So it's in that game, they're not even in the passes that's coming in?
Right.
490 or 495, something like that.
There's a report specifically for CRC, so.
Oh, okay.
When they're, when they're moving.
Is that my inbox stuff?
Yeah, that's right.
The main, okay.
And we've already balances. But there were, there were dollars committed out of that, so it's a huge expenditure.
Okay.
Because some of us have always worried about unfunded commitments, which is what you're talking about.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, they've got some funds tied up in commitments to the trail projects, bond.
Okay.
Paying the town back from the, um, the stormwater.
Stormwater.
So, there's a water treatment.
So what percent is earmarked? Does anyone know?
I have a, I can send you out information.
Okay.
So they just put all that together.
Oh, okay.
I've got a big spreadsheet that I'll show you.
Okay, great.
Of what they've done in the past.
Yeah, I just don't.
Five to 10 years.
I don't know much about that either, yet.
Yeah, they're flush.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else have any questions about Park? How much long time you got left on your degree?
I will be done May of 2022.
Okay.
So, I'm, so, yeah, your masters.
Mm-hmm.
Right, I understand that.
Yep, and then, I, I also, I'll be taking a certification exam to become a certified parks and recreation professional through the National Recreation of Parks Association.
Good.
Um, so I plan to take that in the sport, either in the fall or the spring, but that also, you know, that's super, just the exam fee, so just an update on that.
You take that before you graduate?
That's my plan, yeah.
Okay, I'm just asking.
Yeah, I get a year to take it, but I would rather take it sooner than later, just knock it out, so.
Okay.
Early in last year, the council approved a pay for up to 2,000 a semester for her master's degree in parks and land.
Semester, a year.
Year.
It was a year.
It was a year.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Anybody else have anything? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I texted Jeff, and he is still on the road. So I guess he's not really moving, and Terry should be here from 4:00 to 4:30, because I figured Jeff should be here, so.
Sure.
And the way last one was gonna happen, it was on his, but.
Oh, he just, I think he had a phone call.
Yeah, I mean, we could go over the third, we could do a couple of the other ones. Okay, it was sort of a timing, you know, so you're sorry.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, let's do clerks while we're waiting on everybody.
Okay, well, there might be a couple edits that come up on Thursday. Deliberately, um, it might actually decrease, because we took out some of the stellar capital projects. Um, and so it's making for the end of the year, so I just, I, almost $10,000. We did increase the, um, the salaries, because of the town manager cost that we didn't anticipate. Longevity does go down, benefits goes down, but we did budget for additional benefits, just in case, I think Mitch had suggested doing that faculty, and, uh, we're going through the hiring process. There's just minor increases for office supplies and other supplies. I think more and more, my office is taking, I'm postage and just saving, um, charging the EMS and police for, for stamps. At, at the end of the day, it's just easy to transfer that to one office and be done with it. I think we'll have a little bit more travel and mileage, um, in hopes that things will open up a little bit, and we'll be able to go to a couple more conferences. And my husband doesn't, but I was, I was nominated as the, as the secretary treasurer for the lead for treasurer, so that will involve a little bit of traveling.
Mm-hmm.
See, we increased contractual services to, um, by 27,000, might be why we did that.
I mean, the IT went up significantly.
Yeah, not that significant, um, but there was a little bit of that, I think.
911 service.
That was just coming out of there, but. No, we had a reason, and probably if we were doing this first, I'd be prepared than I am now. I think some of it was, I would like to identify, I'd like to look into some view of, of new software. Yes, a couple of things, I'd like to look into some view of county software. What we have is getting old, um, it's, it's still stable, um, but it's in, it's attached to this database. It's not in the cloud, they don't, they kind of support it, kind of don't. So, I'd like it, I would like to look at, um, possibly change it to something else, but I'm not sure what that person would be. I also want to, um, be Baker Tilly, maybe part of it this year, part of it next year, um, to come in and help us, um, put together some plans, um, for the fire, like, just, and some new processes, uh, so that we can start getting ahead of some of these costs. Like Terry, Terry will talk about later on, um, if they, they continue to have maintenance costs, and they're getting new equipment, you're needing to get new equipment or replace equipment that's outdated, and they feel like they're just behind the eight ball, and I want to set up some ways that we can take, we can start putting money away, maybe if it's establishing a Q and fire fund, and a Q and S fund, so that money is, you know, taken off the top, we just put that money away for when it's needed. Um, somewhere, I think Marlene does that already, so I'd like to have Baker Tilly come in and help us get some of these things working.
That was, I think we had, like, estimated 10 to 15,000 potentially in hiring Baker Tilly out of contract services, that was part of that increase.
Oh, okay.
On the revenue side, Karen, um, under, um, the, uh, local income taxes, you're anticipating this year that we collect 511,000, but we're projecting 400,000 from next year?
Yes, and that's a, a pure guess, so.
I figured.
Like I usually say, on the income, I kind of, you know, estimate low, and I'd rather estimate, you know, present low and then come in high at the end of the year and be ahead, rather than estimate high and then overspend.
But I mean, historically.
And I think with the, the, it's local income tax, I think that's based on the last, the last two years, and so I think we're gonna see some of the, the impacts of COVID come into play with that, and so I don't want to overestimate that too much. So, and I really think on, on income, that, the 2022 is actually looking better than I expected. I don't know what 2023 is gonna look like, it's come a ways earlier, so I don't want to get all excited about a 4.3% increase in the maximum rate of culture and get hit, you know, next year with a two, so I want to be careful.
Karen, on your salaries, you're asking for a 9% increase?
Yes. If you remember, it, we increased the town manager salary, um, significantly over what it had been in the past, and so I'm, I'm including, and that's not in this year's budget, so that's the main reason why that's going up.
Just part of that salary's coming out of there.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, though, though I don't plan on having the benefit, the insurance next year.
Right.
We still budgeted it in case.
Okay.
If something happened to Grant, and I had to call Karen and say, I need insurance.
That was Mitch's recommendation.
Right.
In there, even though we aren't likely to use it, like, we aren't this year.
But it is a potential expense of the position.
Yeah, and if, if I randomly left and you hired a town manager, that person's likely to want it. It's, it's already in the budget.
Yep, you've got your 90 days.
Wow, don't think so, there's.
March, April. I'm on the 10-year from him here, I learned about my first. Trying to get her on the 10-year plan. She's vested, I need her 10 more.
I got the eight-year plan. So I did, if I, um, there should be a legal science page that has all of the kinds of, um, already on that, it's gonna be just my, where we're at.
Okay, yeah.
I physically predict us for next year, so we haven't quite gotten there yet, but I, it's best what I set up the second year's old, the salary, um, the salary sort of ending. So, the other, um, increase is under equipment for $12,000, and, um, our, our copier is coming to the end of its life slowly, and so I would like to replace that, to get rid of the sweeping and that copy.
It randomly turns itself on and scares the crap out of you when you're alone at town hall, so.
Do we lease the copier, or do we buy it?
We purchased it, we purchased it used in, honestly, 2013, so it's, you know, done quite well for us.
Will we, will we look at leasing?
Um, I have not, mainly because, I mean, I think we bought that one for about 3,000, so. I mean, I'm gonna, I'll explore options, I'm not saying we're gonna.
Yeah.
Is it something we could use purchasing?
The state of Indiana has a purchasing.
Yeah, Indiana has a.
And then I also sent an email, um, over to South Shore, just to find out what computers are on, basically on the schedule to get everything stopped, because we tried to, you know, keep things up to date. I haven't heard back, that was just on Friday, so he hasn't had a chance to ask me, but. I don't anticipate each turn of the words, but we're all set, we'll, so. Oh, I think one of the other things, maybe in contractual services, too, was just, um, getting some new software for the front desk as well, so that when people come in, we can receive money, um, electronically versus writing out receipts.
Receipts.
Hannah, so, it's just time to upgrade a little bit.
You're gonna have some, okay.
No, it's coughing.
Um, Karen, on the, uh, stellar, which is a reduction of 20,000, what, um, which is good, but what, what is the stellar part of it?
Right, that is, um, for the regional stellar committee, I think they may come and ask for a contribution again.
Okay.
Similar to what they've done, uh, last year and this, this year, so I was, I just put that back. So I just put that back in.
Yeah, each of the towns in the city of Plumben have been contributing to the Croftsports team annually since that started. But we we think that is going to go down where the communities are contributing less. Because the team is trying to raise funds through grants and corporate sponsorships. That's the hope anyway, because we know we've relied on the communities to support the core of that team. And it was great for stellar because the communities all benefited by getting lots and lots of money. So it made sense to have the community support team. But now we're looking at doing other grants and stuff that we hope to get money elsewhere.
Um, I did leave the visitor center there at 14,000. And then the tree program at 12,000, I would expect that most of those scripts will be done Thursday with to present our official request. Then dispatch went up by $2,000 to 12,000. I mean, we just took that out of the budgets.
What do we pay Culver youth out of?
That comes out of the riverboat.
Thank you, that's all I need to know.
And I suggest we wait until Thursday to do that one.
I understand, I just want to know where it came from. And can I ask any questions for Karen, Bill? William, you got any questions for us, the others?
Nothing. Which? Karen, anything in this concern you? I mean, I guess we're, would you sleep over thinking about this besides the whole thing? But that not in your stomach?
Yeah, that not in your stomach, well, I mean, there are a couple of things. It's trying, the biggest thing is trying to to balance keeping employees, keeping quality employees and keeping them happy. And providing necessary services. But not trying to figure out where that that balance is between what can we provide and what do people expect? Because, and I will, I mean, I guess I'll, I'll take the, I'm going to say it now, but I think we have a lot of people who move here. And expect the service, the level of service that they have here that they had in the larger cities and towns that they come from. And we can't provide that. We don't have the money, we don't have the resources to do so. And so I think we just need to keep that, that in mind, because we're trying to balance all of this. And I know there's a desire to provide them best we can. And we certainly try, we got the aerial truck, we have paramedic service, we shot all of those things. But there are only so many, so much in funds that we have that at some point, we're going to say, you know what, we can't do anymore. I mean, or this is, this is the level that we're going to have to have to be at. And we realize you want this, but there's too much of a gap that we can't continue sustaining all of this.
When do you see that happening, Karen?
I honestly don't, well, actually, I think this year might be a tipping point. Quite possibly, this year may be the tipping point. I mean, if we continue with what the what people are asking. It it may be, but I also, you know, last year I was concerned as well and then numbers came in and we were fine. So I just think, just to keep that in the back of your mind, as requests are made. That yes, there are certain, certain things that we have to do. There are certain requirements from the state that we have to meet and we should be doing those. But over and above, we're going to have to have to balance that. I'm also encouraged, I mean, Terry will come in and talk about it as well. But Terry came in this afternoon and was talking about several needs in his department of things that have gone undone. Because he's trying to manage repairs and and other issues. And I asked him to put together a list with, you know, basically a maintenance schedule. Like here's the stuff that you need to, here's the stuff that you need to replace. And so we're going to make a plan to replace five of these every year and get it in writing. And here's the maintenance that needs to take place and get that right. And have it, have it in a in a document. So that, I mean, hopefully Terry sticks, I mean, I think Terry's doing a job. I hope he sticks around for a while, but when there's, there will be turnover because you can't continue. You know, at some point, he's going to say enough and retire. But that document that he can pass on to the next chief to say, this is what we've been doing. This is how it's been working. This is what we should continue because last year was an anomaly and stuff that was planned to get done didn't get done.
Right.
And now they're playing catch up again. And so I'm trying to get him to put that stuff in writing so that we can, going forward, we kind of know, you know, this is, this is coming up. Because his stuff, you know, goes up and down and you just want to be prepared rather than catching up.
Have we ever done a life expectancy study of major equipment to have a sort of a capital projection across the board? I mean, wait, whether it's, whether it's.
I have that one.
No, I don't, so I think it's maybe something we might consider. I would suspect Dan Chili does work like that.
That's part of where I want to call in Baker Tilly and just get some of this stuff organized. So again, you know, same situation with me, I'm not going to be here forever. So I want to be able to, you know, who knows what's going to happen with the next election or the following election. I want to be able to give the next clerk treasurer a document to say, here's how we're operating. Here's how you can get through, you know, the next five years or the next four years and and keep the town in a healthy financial position. Rather than, you know, there you go, good luck, you know.
Look in the closet for the information, it's in boxes.
Yeah. If we've done a asset, asset inventory.
I'm sorry?
Did we ever complete, did we ever, I thought we were going to do a inventory of assets.
Yeah, we did capitalize it.
So did, did we do it?
Yeah, it's all done and we update it every year, which actually I need to present. I'm gonna, I mean, I need to present an agreement with you to continue that, to maintain that.
Okay.
One of the things I definitely noticed, particularly with like Amber, Bob on a daily basis, Wayne. As events are growing and we're, our chambers getting so active, our visitor center so active. These are all really good things, but there's an assumption that behind each of us is like this massive team of people. So Amber, with programming, you know, there's so much potential for programming in that part. But when you're working the kind of hours that we worked during the high season, you can only be in one place at one time. And there isn't a massive team of programming people behind her or an assistant or. So we're, we are hitting that tipping point of if we're going to keep growing programming and keep growing with all these events. Like we had to add to the police department, we're starting to see this tip other departments as well. And I think we have a lot of active boards as well that are doing some pretty great work. Who assume that behind each of us is a massive team. So they like to delegate their work to us as well. And and that's something I never noticed as a council person that I definitely noticed on this side of the table. And it's, it's, it makes for a normal day here is busy without all of that extracurricular stuff. So it's something we're, we're going to have to think about in terms of budget. Like, do we add a resource at some point in time to park or to town hall? Because, you know, the the more you see Karen and I coming in on the weekends just to keep up with the normal day to day. And I see that with Amber as well during her high season. And I've seen it with the police department, with Bob's department. All of that activity, we were hoping to see come about as a result of things like stellar, as things like collaboration, as tourism has taken off in this town. It's, we're definitely coming to a critical. And in some ways, I also want to push the idea of what the planning that Karen's talking about doing financially is also comprehensive planning. We are, we need another strategic plan for the next seven to 10 years for Culver. Along with that economic development initiative, I think we're going to have to think about paying to have another comprehensive plan done.
That was their strike.
Yeah, we, we thought about if we could, that's right. That was the other part, contractual services. You can sometimes get a grant from Ogra for comprehensive planning and they have adjusted how much they're willing to pay for. They've gone up on that. I need to check with Jerry White to see if we qualify since we were part of regional seller. We may not qualify until that's all closed out. If we don't qualify, I'm going to recommend we still move forward with doing a comprehensive plan. If we do qualify within the next year or two, we wait and apply for the grant. And that's something I can do without having to hire Shannon. Planning grants are a little easier to administer. But Karen and I were thinking, if we can do that next year, that's the ideal, get it going with this economic development initiative we've got going. And we can sort of address some of those, the different type of issues we have today than we had in 2014 when we did the last conference plan. So just, that was part of.
But one of the, to your point, Bill, where that tipping point. When I first started, we put, we were putting, I know, like $200,000 of property tax funds into the MBH. And then it's that MBH fund was building. And whenever the state decided that you were going to have to separate out the MBH, MBH restricted and your salaries were going to only be able to be 50% of it. And move that money into the general fund. And so for better or worse, you know, we're probably spending much more, we've had more money going to the general fund. But that also means that we've been spending a little bit more and had, had some leeway. Now we're getting to that point where we're reaching the top of that, that general fund. I mean, just not to get you all excited, but it's a little apprehensive. But when I put the two, what we spend out of the general fund versus that what I've, you know, guessed at the income, we're only about $3,000 over. Which, you know, was a couple, a couple golf cart permits. You know, or some, some tickets, I guess you could say. Yeah, so, I mean, which is a good thing, but at the same time, I think I'm getting a little bit better estimating income. So it has me a little, little concerned too. And it's more operations than, you know, when you have projects, it's a one time thing that you're taking a hit on versus operations. Those continue to go up just by more than two cents, I guess.
To, to your, I guess, to your point on expectations, especially with new residents in town. And I think you, you talked about it last week when you talked about the software and hardware for the, for Bob's program for the water. I mean, just to capitalize on that as a, you know, here is a technology and a service that we're adding that implement life easier for all of the residents. To capitalize on promoting those types of things when they're done.
You're not going to see that in a lot of small towns like this.
Yeah. I think in one thing, I mean, Jeff is trying to, you know, up the level of, you know, professionalism in this department, which is great. And I think, you know, Wayne's guys do it, you know, fire department with that aerial truck. And there's, there's a lot of things that we've been promoting, I hope, and I hope people realize it. But, you know, when you have people who are here part time, you know, we can promote it, you know, till we're full of the base. But, you know, people don't always absorb all that, so.
As we've learned from the trail project, they don't always engage with us.
Yeah, and again, you know, there may be some resources to help with the new resident site type of thing. To focus information in there of us about that.
And we do, and we, I think, you know, if people come in here and they contact us by email, I've got just a four page. You know, residents guide to Culver just has basic information of the departments and services that they offer and the phone numbers. And, you know, trying to get them to, you know, call the 4719 number at Republic Services as opposed to the one that down in Cincinnati where they won't get anywhere. So, and we use Town Guide on Lakeville to get information and stuff, but it's not going to get everyone in the.
In terms of additional resources, if we've explored student, I mean, intern systems or even with.
Yeah, Karen Schuman and I have been talking about that possibility of having, you know, we have one at the park that's worked out really well. And in fact, Amber managed to get two weekend days off this past summer that never happened before. Because we had one that she really felt she could, you know, we put park in their hands to go to a wedding. So I was thinking about doing that potentially for more than one department too. Depending on what kind of costs we can come up with. Karen and I just talked about it right before I went to North Carolina. So we're going to follow up. The cabinet company is now working with the school to hire interns. So we kind of want to piggyback on that, like, let's build that program out. If the town does it, the cabinet company does it, maybe other businesses will kind of jump on that.
We've done two summer interns at the library. Out of the school system.
If there are junior seniors in the school system that are interested in.
That's it.
Public administration or even journalists in the blogs or, you know. There could be some opportunities.
Yeah, I think we definitely have to think through like the specific things we want to help with, like, what are they coming in to do? And how does it work with the schedules up here? Like when water bills are due, you better get out of Julie and Karen's way because the whole town shows up in two days when their water bills are due. And I've learned even like, oh, it's a good time for me to shut my door there and just, you know. So I think if we, if we think through internally how we want that to work so that we can make it to our benefits. It's not tapping us to have to train people to do things that aren't really going to help or, you know, we've, we would love to jump all over it. And then we sort of go, oh, we're going to have to train these people, when do we have time for that? But once we figure it out, and Karen is very much game for it. And I think it would be to the benefit of those kids, something good to put on college applications and so forth. So for no other reason, we need to do that.
And probably with Karen Schuman, I mean, you can work out some credit programs for those kids to actually earn credits doing those, those life skills.
And I think too, even if we, if we can't, even if we only had one or two interns, from a cost standpoint, we could also treat that as an opportunity to have an advisory to do the council. So we've been kind of kicking around that idea. Bourbon actually has a non-voting student on their council. Actually, they had two, so we could look at it that way. But Bremen is doing the same thing. So I think we're all kind of getting on board with the idea of engaging the youth in a different kind of way. And I hope Karen and I can work some of that out as schools starting so we can hit these kids pretty early on in the school year.
Okay, let's, let's wrap up the clerk. Do you have anything to add? I don't have anything more to add. Anybody else? Okay. Since Wayne's here, let's, we were still waiting on others. You want to move on to Wayne? Do what? Okay. It's not time for coffee yet.
I think coffee would be good with this.
You're right.
I had one for breakfast. Taking myself for eating one.
I didn't want to bring up increased tickets.
I just texted Terry to let him know if he can come sooner.
Okay.
So what else is on the schedule for today, Karen, besides?
Oh, it was EMS and fire.
Okay.
I don't know that I feel comfortable. Going over EMS, but you all saw the, the increase.
Yeah, Kelly?
He was on the road on the way home from vacation, I didn't realize he was still very long way down.
You said he was on the road, I thought it's a fall.
Well, I don't, maybe he is on the fall.
Okay.
He just said he's on the road. And that moved it, so I know he was on vacation last week, but.
I'd rather do him separately, I mean, when he's here. That's just my opinion.
Yeah, I think, I mean, there are a lot of questions on that that I think I'll answer.
No, I'm not going to do it behind his back. No, I'm not gonna do it behind his back. Yeah, let's, I was just getting ready to say, let's ask Marlene and Joyce if they got questions.
Were there any encumbrances from twenty twenty to twenty-one for either the fire or the EMS?
The fire had twenty thousand seven thirty-six and thirty cents.
Okay, and was any of that fire, was any of that encumbrances for the uniforms?
Those were those, yes, they were the, um, the turnout here.
And was that the eleven thousand?
For the fire?
Yes. I was just saying that we had put in, in the budget, eleven thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for, for the uniforms.
Yeah, and then they switched for some of us last year. It's got, I think they were gonna build up to it and then. They decided to just get, go ahead and get it.
Okay, so we're not doing that anymore? Okay, so.
So they got the. They got all that, they got all that turnout here. I believe, when Terry gets here, I'll confirm, but I believe that was, we were kind of building up to it. And saving money over a couple of years. Well, they changed course. And decided to get it last year.
All right, thank you. That, that helps because I was concerned because we were spending from the budget and I, and so it's the twenty thousand seven three six thirty. What about the EMS?
EMS did not cover anything.
So then my question is, on EMS. We had four hundred and sixty-one thousand nine hundred and twenty-eight estimated for twenty. And we spent four thousand eight hundred and forty-two thousand nine twenty-two. Where, where did, how could we spend more than that? How did we spend more than our budget?
I believe we went and did an additional preparation. We did twenty-five thousand to cover singles. I think mainly because we didn't anticipate. We didn't anticipate Capa retiring. And then we hired an EMS director and then she resigned. And then we hired Jeff, so.
Okay, so, so that's twenty-five of additional appropriations. And then we also used the twenty, did we also use then the twenty thousand that we had budgeted for, um. The lease equipment to cover that extra spending?
That ended up covering your extra spending.
Okay, so between the twenty and the twenty-five, that's enough to cover that difference. Okay, thank you for explaining.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
You been down at the beach sunbathing? Yeah, I thought that's probably why you were sweating profusely.
I'm really warm this evening. I know that I might stay.
She took back the utility cost in order to fund the fire.
You ready?
I'm as ready as I'm ever gonna be, I can say that. All right, so you guys seen what, uh. What we kind of proposed, uh, with Karen and Jenny, we went over a feature or so, we talked about. And since, since that time. I've been talking with the guys at the station and, and trying to get a better idea or a handle on some of the shortfalls that we keep running into. Also mentioned in the chair, and I talked to her about it more than one time, this has happened through years of us digging out of the basement. They're always coming, us having to come up with something. Big money, or have to come up with something that's bigger. And no way to do that except to attack our budget, which, like, uh, this year's budget alone was, uh, if you take out the truck payment. And the part of the gear, that's almost half of our budget this year. Uh, just to show you that we're digging out of holes every time we do this, and that makes the budget look like it's terrible. But it's a line item, things that we have, trucks we budgeted for six years, for four years. Twenty-five percent of my budget every year is already, already gone to a truck. That we should be on the other side though, and have money building funds so that when we get ready to buy a truck, we have money instead of digging a hole every time. I don't, I don't know the real true answer of how to get out of it. But, uh, the things that, the things that aren't, I guess, in you guys' eyes, what you're seeing. The maintenance that we're doing now, is things that have never been maintenance since. A long time, we've been trying to upgrade, trying to get our things maintenance, we're talking about, uh, things like our, um. Our air packs that we wear, they're about six thousand dollars apiece. They're good for fifteen years. We have ten of them that are from nineteen ninety-six. Uh, we've upgraded five new packs in the last six years, trying to make them come out of our budget. Since there's not a lot of money there, I'll explain it in general, agree to this every year when it comes to the end of the budget. I say, if we got money, we're gonna buy those. That's not working. It should be, we're gonna buy these because we have to have. Once these things, we're, we're still at this point, we just had them worked on and they're gonna work for another year. But since they don't even pass enough PA standards right now, something goes wrong. And forbid, truck. I can't dress, I can give us five people with newer airbags, everybody else is gonna be in the old style. So that's just one of the items I want you guys to be aware of, we get them serviced every year, it's part of our maintenance program. And they, they get worked on every year because they're so old, every year, the maintenance goes up a little higher because buying. Getting parts, fixing them, tweaking them, trying to make it work, taking two airbags and making it into one airbag, just, just for saying.
What's the maintenance cost per airbag?
It always varies because it depends on how, which kind of pack it is, as to how it gets hooked up for the maintenance.
Rough, I know.
I, I don't know the answer to that, we just had them done and I haven't got, I don't think we've got the bill for that.
And I'm asking, is it five hundred dollars an airbag, is it?
I'm gonna say probably two hundred, two hundred dollars an airbag, and we have eighteen airbags.
You say a new airbag costs what?
Uh, between five and six thousand dollars. Probably pricing them out because I've been trying to buy one of these as I can with my budget. And it kind of, kind of gets a little shortfall because of the one I bought two years ago when I was in. Doesn't jive up with the ones we bought two years before that that came with the truck. Same company, same brand, not the same airbag. They, they change, they're modifying so fast that, so we may have five guys in three different kinds of airbags. It's a little different. It's not totally different, but it's different. I, I don't, I'm not saying I have to buy ten airbags, but I'm saying when I get ready to replace these, I'm gonna, you're looking at fifty thousand dollars, my budget can't handle that. Yeah, it's one of those, just one of those items on my list that we need to start, need to dig out of this hole and get built up on. We've got, uh, our gear is great, we just want, we just bought new gear, nine years from now, we're gonna buy new gear. How do we build on that from where we're at right now, so to get into that point where we taxed last year's budget, this year's budget?
Are there no grant opportunities for these types of purchases?
We've tried grants for gear, two for airbags. We just got a grant for the Marshall County grant, they gave us a twenty-five hundred dollar grant for helping us with our BLS part.
I'm talking about like national grants or something through your firemen's associations and.
There might be some out there, but.
I think you need to, I think.
I think someone.
You need to turn over every stone.
Yeah, well, uh. That's, that's pretty good, we need a grant writer or something, or somebody that's gonna be.
We got a grant writer.
Somebody that's going to go to that page. But regardless of that, we can't, can't, I can't rely on a grant, I can't say there's gonna be.
I'm not saying rely on a grant, but it's just another opportunity. In addition to.
We've done five in the last two years.
I mean, in, you know, in addition to planning through the budget.
Right, I'll, it's not like we're not doing it, we've done five in two years. It's not, we didn't try, not try, we're trying, but it's a little different than, uh. Us volunteer guys donating our time to write a grant to get money for ourselves, you know, it's.
Like I said, we got a grant writer now.
Well, I think this, Bill, this gets back to what we were talking about earlier in terms of.
Yeah.
Assessing our equipment needs and the life expectancy of those, and then.
I agree.
Capital planning that, as, as Terry said, you know, if we know in ten years we're gonna have to replace that turnout here again, then, and it's gonna cost us a hundred thousand dollars in ten years. And over the next ten years, we should be, what do you decide?
Ten thousand.
Dollars, something like that, recognizing that, um, that we're gonna, you know, we're gonna have that.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be there, it's not gonna be an option.
Now you're gonna put it into like, you know, a reserve, you know?
Or if we can get to the point where that ever happens, so we don't have that happen with our budget, it's, you know, there's our budget. Is gone because we're sending in what we are. Even like a new truck, we've got a new truck, five years from now, we're gonna be buying a truck. It's gonna be, how much? Five, six, seven? I'm gonna guess six to seven hundred thousand dollars. So we know that's gonna happen. We wait till it comes and then, so where's the money from? Somewhere, we need to jump this bus. I mean, along with raising the budget, along with trying to find grants or not, but. It sounds like to me, I've heard a lot of places that do get them, it has a lot to do with grant writers, we have talked about it, we've looked into this part of it too. But that's just one maybe solution.
I agree. So Terry, a lot of your. A lot of your maintenance, a line item on your maintenance, it's not necessarily the trucks, it's the things like the airbags and.
We do, we do.
I mean, that, that's included in maintenance, so.
Right, all our air bottles get maintenance on a five-year basis. Our ladders, all ladders that we got on all trucks get every year. Our airbags get every year. Our truck pumps get every year. Our truck maintenance, which is someone that comes in and runs the motors and do that, this is not something that we do occasionally and things like that. This is another one. All those are just, those are like our top-line things that cost money every year or every five years or big bottles every fifteen, we have to take them in.
This is where I was getting at earlier about getting, having Terry write all this out.
Right.
Because that will give you a better picture of what all is expected of this department and, and how to run. It's not just, you know, let's go hop on the fire truck and go.
So send somebody on the truck with old gear, I, who's the short guy, you get it? No, I mean, s- sounds funny, but it's not, if somebody, until somebody gets hurt after the horse thing, something gets hurt or something happens. And, and we already know that it's outdated, no reason at any. Our truck, seven ply tires are good for. Six years or seven years, we've never changed a tire. We just got rid of a, what truck, ninety-three? Ninety-four? We sold it to them with the agreement, I told them, I said, this, these are original tires. Never changed them, I mean, DOT says, you guys gotta change your tires, like. Can't change a tire, you know, I don't have that kind of, we don't have that kind of money. No, then my budget, there's enough places that I can still do that. What we do, we just keep going. So, um, I guess what I'm proposing is something that the budget has to be raised substantially. Uh, the money has to be able to start going to the places that were these big items coming. And if I don't try to push this budget higher, uh, we're walking along.
So Terry, you're saying that this twenty-nine thousand that we have an increase now in the repair and maintenance, you're saying you're not comfortable with that, it needs to be higher?
I'm saying that, that, that that number could be good, it should be good.
Is that twenty-nine thousand?
That's right, that's just maintenance, that's building maintenance and also trucking, so it's maintenance on everything except for Scotty Airs and the four-nine item bottles.
Building.
Right, that's right, building maintenance also.
Where's your? I might, I might add too, and, and Terry, we have talked before, but when we were in here doing the budget last year or two years ago, and we put that eleven thousand five hundred dollars into new equipment. And then when we got your figures the other day and we seen that we were over the budget by forty-five thousand, or, you know, forty thousand, whatever. And now today you're telling me that we did go ahead and buy those uniforms last year out of the budget. We thought you were building it up and then when it come time to buy those uniforms, you were gonna use that and we were gonna match that. Because I have money that I'm putting aside to buy those new uniforms, and I just found out tonight that you did that last year.
Did that, actually, we did that this year. Because of the supply and demand, and when you get things, we ordered the uniforms last year, we got them paid for them this year and covered the money in those levels from last year. Invest out of this year's budget.
Okay, so it's a combination of last year and this year? Okay.
So, because there's no way one year's budget would take that.
So that's why. Okay, so for twenty twenty-two, we still have that eleven thousand in there, but what you're saying is you really need that for something other than uniforms?
Correct.
So we need to really change the, this description on this to something in addition to uniforms, right? Because we've got fourteen thousand in there again, which we don't need for uniforms in twenty twenty-two, but we probably need it for other maintenance of other items.
I think you still had, when we met, you still had uniforms to purchase, like a handful.
If we get a new person on an apartment now, it's gonna cost us, uh. Thirty-seven hundred dollars roughly to put a person in.
Okay.
But, I mean, so, that money is not, I mean, that's not enough, that's not money for two people, I mean. Oh, sure.
So we've got fourteen thousand in there for uniforms for twenty twenty-two, and if we offered another person. We might have enough in there for two or three people is what you're saying.
Right.
You need to tie some of that though, down to your airbags or something, that's. Because I think that fourteen thousand, you could just take it back to what it was.
Exactly, and, uh. Let's go back to last year that that money was arraigned, is it? I think we took, I think we, I thought we spent seventeen thousand dollars on our uniform budget this year, Lauren with twenty thousand dollars out of last year, so I'm gonna share it, come on backwards.
Well, that sort of makes sense because you're saying you're over on your, your twenty-one budget by twenty-five thousand uniforms.
Cause we took everything and we arraigned in the budget last year. And we put the rest in, took it off of this year's budget, so you didn't have to, because I'm doing from now on.
Yeah.
And that's why that's that way. So that budget to build up in ten years is gonna be. Forty thousand dollars. And that rang for fifty thousand, that was, we know the price is gonna be that day, I can guarantee tomorrow.
So are you comfortable with the airbag? Uh, estimate or budget for eighty-six hundred dollars, or do you think you need more?
Not even, it's not even in the game, that's barely making us survive.
So you need to increase that line item?
Right now, this year, I've, like I've done and every year I've done, we've been trying to get these repair bottles on a rotating balance. I've always bought two or three, because remaining money at the end of the year, so we can get rid of this. Next year, we have ten bottles that are going in the dumpster. Next year, we have ten bottles that are going in the dumpster.
That's not enough for ten?
No.
So we need to increase that line item?
Exactly, but what, how, but what I'm trying to say is that what, last year, we didn't buy any, cause whatever happened, I don't know, there should have been three bought last year, then we would only need seven. And this year, I could have went without one year, so these things rotate, you know, every, in fifteen years.
So why didn't you put that number higher, when you met with us? For air packs, shouldn't it be like twenty-some thousand?
Uh, yeah, it should, it should for air packs, because I haven't, I did price out an air pack yet. We just got one last night, the guys came up with numbers in two different places for me, and it was like, well, it's, it's in my mind that I was gonna buy at least one, which I know I need ten, but I can get by with one in three years, but with ten bottles. For this year, still coming out of the budget. For air packs, that's something that I, Karen can confirm, that I've done this every year that I've been there trying to, so we don't have to have, we don't wanna buy twenty bottles, and then in ten years, buy twenty bottles.
Right.
Buy three every year.
Yeah.
Keep that number down, rotate, the old ones in and out, but the air packs are a thing that's been neglected in that category. So we bought something with the truck that we bought, when the squad came with three, and we've only got two other ones since then, I think.
What does an air pack cost?
Six thousand dollars, so actually six thousand, between fifty-one and sixty-four, we got two bids last night, and they're a little bit different animals, so that's why there's a difference in price.
So I, I think we should try to budget three, replacing three every year then, Terry, in the air packs. And then you have to have, you have to have maintenance on those air packs.
Every, every year, they get maintenance, they get tested.
But that's part of the maintenance line.
Right, that, that comes in.
Oh, that comes out of the maintenance line?
Should come out of maintenance.
Rather than out of the air packs, it's, this is just purchasing the air packs, okay?
And the whole thing that's gonna happen, so.
Okay.
Where, where are the air packs on the budget on this?
Very bottom.
Very bottom, right at the end.
Oh, I see it, I'm sorry, yeah, okay.
Terry, you're saying you've got ten that have to be replaced, the rough cost of six thousand dollars, and so this air pack line, um, which is a capital purchase, should be about sixty thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's, now that's just air packs, that's not bottles. Bottles are separate, you buy them together, and they're eleven hundred bucks a piece.
And where do you buy that on this, on this, this?
Sorry, say it again?
Where are you bottles, to buy the bottles?
Air packs, all under air packs.
Oh, it's the bottles and air packs are in there?
I keep those, they kind of go together when they get to me, so I try to buy them on the same line.
So kind of the six thousand for your pack, and eleven hundred for the bottle, is gonna be seventy-one hundred.
So total seventy-one hundred, so seventy-one grand. Right?
In the ballpark, yes, cause I can't guarantee, I can't guarantee prices, and they won't guarantee you nothing until you sell these.
Yeah.
From today to yesterday to last week, if I order right now, might have them next year.
How many, uh, air packs do you have total? Eighteen, how many bottles do you have?
Thirty, we're supposed to have, we're supposed to have air bottle spare for every pack, so we should have thirty-six, but I think we have thirty-five.
So in this air pack line, if you bought three a year, that's six thousand dollars plus three new bottles, but do you have to buy more new bottles?
So I think, I think I can, I can get by, if I go another year, if I buy three air bottles this year.
Can you not use a get through, just, can you, just give us the number?
Well, the problem with it is I don't wanna buy them all at one time.
You're right.
I think you should maybe do four or five, but yeah, Terry, maybe four.
I just don't wanna hear you say, I wanna get through, because then we're gonna be in the same situation next year.
Well.
When we met the first time, we should have the real number before we even walk in this room.
Yeah, maybe I didn't try, you know, it's.
It's all right, just give us the number.
And I, and I know that these things, and it's not, it's not the first time I ever brought these things up, but it's, I don't, where am I supposed to go off the money? I don't, I'm not coming in begging.
We're figuring that out.
That's where we're trying to.
That's what we're supposed to do.
Yeah, we're trying.
Yeah, we're supposed to be.
What you need and not trying to, to skim through.
To skim through it, yeah.
We get back to the situation every year, and then we feel horrible because we're not providing you with what you need, but we don't know what you need until you come in here, and then, oh, and back to that whole, you know, we'll, we'll get over this, and we'll work through it together and get it figured out, it's just, you know.
I mean.
We wanna get you what you need, and you need it, rather than being behind, so.
And we're wanting basics, we're wanting, not wanting pie in the sky, we wanna know what you need, that's what she's saying.
Those are the, the things that I, all the things that I mentioned there are things that, not that I need, that that's gonna happen, are gonna happen. I can't expect to send somebody in two hours with expired.
We don't want to, because that's just.
I agree.
On insurance.
Well, and each year, I mean, like this year, it's seventy-one hundred a pop for the air pack and the bottle. Okay, depending on however many you need, we'll put it in this year, next year, it might be seventy-four hundred.
Exactly.
So next year, we'll put in seventy-four hundred, depending on how many you need. So that's, I think how we're trying to help you and trying to budget it.
So really, that's.
If somebody thinks I'm.
Be more like twenty-two.
If somebody thinks I'm wrong, please speak.
Well, what does that give us? Does that give us three air packs and how many bottles?
Three total, if it's about.
Three and three.
Seven thousand a piece or seven?
Seventy-one hundred a piece.
Put twenty-two thousand.
Do we need more bottles than we need air packs?
Yeah.
Um.
My standard is put seven air pack for extra for every.
How many?
So we should get.
But the bottles go out.
Terry, how many of your air, air bottles are out of date?
Ten, I believe it was ten was the number.
So you need ten air bottles at a twelve hundred?
Next year, next year, they go out of date, okay, not this year, next year, first, January one, ten bottles are going in the garage.
January one twenty-two?
Yeah, well, that's this year, you replace them this year, cause they're dead next year.
Exactly.
So you need ten, plus you need some actual packs.
So it's eleven thousand in air bottles, let's say twelve thousand.
And.
Twenty-one thousand in the air pack itself.
So now you're up to thirty-three, so if you just put thirty-five in that line item, that should cover you.
Didn't you say that ten of those air packs are out of date?
Ten of the bottles.
Life is fifteen years.
Right.
We have ten, isn't that correct?
We have ten.
Ten of them that are nineteen ninety-six, and they've had their.
Just fifteen.
Life almost twice.
So you need ten air packs, they passed all the tests.
We gave them, they passed the tests, but they're up there, you know, walking on the edge, can't.
I mean, I would, I would rather, and we're not talking about doing this, pushing back purchase of a new truck or something like that, and have the personal protective equipment that you need, up to date and certified, um, you know, on a regular or annual basis. And so I, I guess, I don't, I guess, do you, I don't know that three is the right number, is, is what I'm hearing.
I agree.
I'm hearing it's ten, as we go forward, then, you know, after we, we get caught up, then maybe, you know, we put in reserve, uh, you know, two a year for the next five years, then in the ten years, those, or five years, those ten would be replaced.
Right, as long as we get to the point where we're back on top of it, but.
Uh-huh, how many, how many people do you have on your roster now?
Fifteen, I believe.
So, wait a minute, we've got then, we've got air packs and bottles that people aren't using?
You have to have, every seat that's in every truck has to have an air bottle and an air pack. So if one truck goes out, which people go out, you know, it's not every, all the trucks go all the time, so if we take one truck, five people, five packs, five extra bottles, have to be there.
Okay, thank you.
That's why it's kinda.
So you need, you need, to be current for next year, you need ten air packs and twenty bottles?
Ten air packs and ten bottles.
The double?
An air pack comes with one bottle.
We already have, we already have other bottles that I've already conferred through the years of buying three at a time that aren't.
Okay, so you need ten and ten, right, okay.
And that will pick everything on, in that category back to the beginning. And some of the other ones will fall through, I don't know how many years I've been doing that, but I know six or seven years back when I was buying two bottles or three bottles, trying to pick off some of those old ones that were retiring.
So this line needs to be.
Seventy-one, seventy-five, let's just say seventy-five, yeah.
Okay.
You any kind of a waiver from the state on this, is that a state requirement that every truck has a bottle and?
NFPA standards.
Huh?
NFPA standard.
Okay, so there's no, no way we're gonna get a.
They wouldn't waiver?
No, I don't think they're gonna waive.
They're not gonna waive a breathing apparatus on a fire.
No, but I mean, if you only have fifteen on your crew.
Yeah, but you don't have time when the tire moves off the switcher.
Yeah.
That's, that's the downfall.
Yeah.
So why don't we budget it, and then, in the meantime, between now and purchase time, I can look at grant opportunities that might be out there, we can apply for a grant. That's a significant enough amount.
Yeah.
And also, because it's protected gear, there might be special grants for, you know, things that are critical nature like that are more likely to get granted than.
Few of those have, a few of those grant opportunities have fell up, like I said, and I, I think we talked about one last night, a new one that just popped up, and I don't know if somebody's looking into it or not looking into that, remember the name, do you? But anyways.
You get me on information.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's there, it's just.
Yeah, and it, it's okay, that, I mean, that is something that I can do on the side, you know?
Terry, I'm, I'm purchasing these things in a year or two ago, or maybe when we got the ladder truck, we joined a, a state purchasing.
Yeah.
So is that where we're getting the pricing from, especially if we're gonna look at ten?
No, we know we have, on air packs and air bottles, there's districts. So we buy them from the people that are district, it's not even like, we went and got a price, we're not across the grid, to make sure that the people are dealing with prices.
They're honest.
Yeah, that's why we had two prices, cause otherwise, there's, I can't get three prices, I used to have to get three. I can't, I can't get three, I have to buy them from people selling them in the district.
I have a question, since this is a big nut that we're trying to cover this year, would it make sense for your budget to put that in the lease purchases for twenty-twenty-two? Or do you wanna leave it, are you gonna leave it at what?
I would leave it for what it is.
Okay.
Well, then I got a question too, since we're really looking at material changes here, do we wanna let them go back and prepare, and do we need to prepare new sheets and come back?
We're gonna have to meet again, cause Jeff's not here, and then he.
Yeah, so I, I, I mean, I, you know, I think we continue to keep talking and working through, but let's see if there are other line items that need to be adjusted, and then we talk about this even more, because this is a substantial change.
I just think we keep talking about it now, but I have to carry mine in next week.
Yeah.
Well, I'm not saying we wait till December, I'm just saying, you know, we, we wait till Thursday.
Let's at least go over to the, the other things, people. That's why we did it.
Okay. No, I don't wanna do it next week, I wanna get it done this week, so, okay, continue on.
I have a quick question, is this the only department, this is the only department that has this issue? Does the other departments that have vehicles, for example, E S?
EMS, yes.
Are they having the same issue?
Different issues, they have issues, but different issues.
The, uh, the air tanks, the air tanks and stuff that, that EMS has, we don't carry as many.
Yeah.
Uh, air bottles, ours is oxygen, oxygen tanks, uh, in the EMS.
But they do have the same problem.
But, yeah, they, they all out.
Get to the budget process is what I'm asking.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Particularly with the big equipment.
So it seems like we're, I just.
Well, that is why I'm asking, well, that's what I'm, that, that was my whole point when we began this whole thing about getting the Figurative and getting ahead of it, and asking Terry to come up with a list of, these are the items that I have, this is when they need to be replaced, this is maintenance that I have to do, this is when I need to do it. I don't have, I don't have any of that to follow along with for any of the departments. And so, you know, for me to be able to say, you're going out, this is how we need to set things up in the future to put money away, put money aside for it, I wanna get all that information together so we can go about.
Okay.
So that's where, at the end of the day, that's where we're trying to get.
You talked about employee satisfaction, though. That wouldn't satisfy me very much, if I'm with a twenty-five-year-old questionable.
Right, yeah, and that's, that's why we ended up getting the gear for them all last year, because. Yeah.
Well, if, if you have to ask for additional appropriations this year for fire.
Oh, we will be, you know.
Uh, yeah.
All around.
Could we, I mean, would it be less painful on the bottles to, you know?
Just get them this year?
Put half of it on this year and half on next, or do it all at, at one time?
Yeah, doing appropriation now and.
I mean, that's a question.
But they're expiring January one.
Yeah.
So I don't know how long you're worried.
Pay for them ahead of time?
See, that's what they say, pay half of it now and half of it next year.
Okay, well, after we receive them.
Yeah.
So you work out a deal with the.
Right.
I can order all these.
That, that's easy to do.
Okay.
We're not gonna pay for it, I'm just.
Right, yeah, yeah, um, if you get, even if you got half now and half in January.
Right.
Right as they expire.
It's not, it's not like you.
Yeah.
It's all, all of it's on order, it's all backer.
Uh, okay.
Yeah, I think that was a thing every day, air bottles are, every day they do.
How long do you think, how long do you think it might take to get them?
Yeah, shoot. I'm gonna, I'm gonna shoot a guess, six months.
So if you want them by January one, when they expire, we need to be older again.
Just guess the way things are coming in, I can.
Oh, okay.
If I order them, at least I can buy them.
Okay, uh.
Hey, Bill, Bill, can you take that outside? Thank you.
Okay.
You wanna start at the top, then go back to salaries, so we can explain what we did there.
Oh, yeah, I'm curious about that line.
Well, the volume of calls with the department has gone up significantly since their BLS, and now a backup to EMS.
Right.
And so, when only some of the firefighters have the BLS to go on those calls, then some can go on a regular fire call, but the volume has increased significantly enough that we want to increase the pool of money available to divvy up among the calls, and.
It's actually the number, the amount of money that each individual is getting to go on a call has dropped since we became BLS because we're on the model. Our money comes in a quad, it's thrown out as of the number of calls that we get.
I used to.
So like this year, the normal year in August, in August, yeah.
Sixty-four to sixty-seven calls this year, last year was sixty-eight total for the year.
So we're thinking they're gonna be closer to ninety or a hundred calls, but with the same pool of money to divvy up among the calls. So we increased that pool by this, rather than increase it by two or three percent like we've done in the past, we, we took a leap.
And that's why the salary line increased.
Yeah.
Is that?
Some of the guys, particularly probably some of the younger ones, they do rely on that extra bit of money, you know, rather than take a part-time job, they're volunteering, and it's not significant amount of money that they get. I mean, we're gonna divvy up a hundred thousand dollars among fifteen men, it's not a lot of money, but it, it does mean something to them, so the idea was, let's make sure it continues to mean something, because the number of volunteers we get is going to decrease, no matter what. Um, because, I think, volunteer involved in training, um, and spend an awful lot of time at the fire department for very little money, or you can take a part-time job if you wanted to, and he's gonna start choosing us over that. So we thought, let's put a little more money in that pool and make sure they continue to choose us.
But what if we, what if we, like I talked to you and Karen about, and I think I mentioned it to you Saturday, um, what if we, if the people that are qualified as the BLS people. We incentivize them on an annual basis, rather than have every time that they go on a BLS call, the loop, the pool, for the guys that aren't. I mean, we're, we're paying, we're paying, uh, uh, maintenance, uh, we got two maintenance guys, which is fine, but what, but we're basically incentivizing those guys, what if we incentivize the people that were on the BLS?
Tried doing that as a line item a couple of years ago to change that, it became a lot of friction in the department, because we had guys that wanted to go to maintenance calls, no matter what they were, and the other guys. And the other guys going, I don't want to. I signed up for fire. I'm not, I want to go in this because of massive friction. Because you're more educated than me on EMS that I signed up for fire department. You're gonna be going and get paid. I'm not going to. That was part of the scuttles was what was coming out of it.
It's a guy, but if you, if, if the guys on EMS had a separate incentive every year, but they weren't into the pool. Would they be in the pool for fire calls, but they wouldn't be in the pool for.
But there's still a pool no matter how many different families.
So it's just a thought.
We, we tried it and we did, and we changed ours to now that when we have a BLS call, all firemen are coming. Okay, so as long as we have a permit and key or responder on the vehicle, that vehicle will roll by our BLS rules. The rest of the guys will stay at the station, or they'll go on the truck. It's long as someone else is there, they can go there. But we can't go to a scene without one of those people on our truck.
But if they show up.
Bags, they can do, there's a lot of things to do there besides these guys taking care of it. We're all certified in CPR. So there's things that, so we're all going to the call. We're all the people that choose not to go to these calls. They don't come to the station.
They don't get paid.
Didn't you also mention that if people show up to the station, they'll stay at the station and do some cleaning and.
That's what you did, yeah.
Always something there to do. So this is the way that we, in our department, that we've taken care of that situation. There's, the guys are very proud of the trucks. They're cleaning them all the time, whether they're out or not. I mean, we're, they're out on an ambulance run and they come back. There's two guys washing the truck because they're there. It's something to do.
Okay.
I mean, it's, so we've got that problem kind of figured out, but we're just running more, you know, we're running more calls.
Yeah.
I think that's an option.
Yeah. I mean, if it works for the guys, then that's the, yeah, and that's the important thing.
Want to come to, that's not a problem. They don't, so, you know, we get mad at you.
Yeah.
You want to come here, they're still.
Their option, as long as they.
Do.
The other side of the salary thing that I haven't mentioned is we are going to talk to the academy about the number of inspections that Terry has had to do. I think it can be significant some months, especially when they have as many buildings going up as they do now. But we'd like to see some sort of service fee paid for his salary line item for that. There are a couple other guys who are qualified to do the inspections where they can always be paid as well. But it takes away from his actual job job because of course they don't want him to come over there at seven PM at night. They want him there during business hours.
I say Saturday.
Yeah, and that's really gonna take a toll. No matter who is in Terry's position in the department, we want to kind of work that out with the academy now just because it is a special service. We think they might be more willing to accommodate some sort of administrative fee or something for that. So that's just a heads up about probably being part of our dialogue over the emergency services fees.
So are these, are these inspections on sprinkling systems and life safety?
Fire inspection.
Is it part, is it part of the building occupancy with the new building?
Yes.
Okay.
If you not get occupancy permit unless it goes through.
Then why don't we just raise the rate for the building occupancy permit or and then pass it back?
And then go back to.
Have it put back in Terry's budgets. I mean, I just.
Let's just. Raise their separate fee for housing versus.
A building.
Commercial, because you don't come to a house.
No, that's, that's.
Be associated with that.
We don't, I, I, I mean, I don't see, especially on a commercial building. I'm not.
Yeah, I mean, I would. Commercial building, if you can differentiate between the two.
I recollection and. Separated.
That's a good point. That's a good point.
They have to go through the same situation through the RST, show me tags, show me documentation.
Right.
Everything's going. And then it's just a matter of me going to Chuck or when I'm over there, that's the county inspector, the academy, and I just go, there you go. And he'll sign a permit, that will let him know what will happen.
Yeah, I mean, there is a permit fee for commercial buildings and we did raise that fee three, four years ago, maybe. Um, but I don't know that it takes this situation. So I'll find out what it is.
It's not just the, no, not, not explaining, it's not just the inspections that have to go into it. It's nothing. We just got an email the other day. The captain was trying to do downgrade something and get a a variance on another elevator or something, something you have to read through to know what's going on, what are they, how are they getting the variance? Why are they getting the variance? And there's complaints, or we, I don't know, then I get to go on the state and talk to them and what's going on. So there's still stuff there that's not just inspections, take more to it.
Those all strike me as, as billable revenue opportunities.
One of the reasons we want to raise that variance fee because there's a lot of research involved in Chuck's part, Ken's part, my part, et cetera.
Be, uh, the catalyst. That's because once out of the town, that's gonna be the county.
We're going through the same thing locally about.
Right.
Four in five cases every BZA meeting now.
Is there anything you charge for?
If I come to your house more than three times on a false alarm, you'll get a bill.
Okay, what about all the automobile accident?
We do not bill for automobile accidents. There's really no, if you check your binder, they'll say that they don't pay for it. There's nothing that they. We have, years ago, we used to get like a hundred dollars or something like, if the insurance company deemed it was okay to send you a check. Now they don't, even a house fire. They just look at you.
And on the EMS calls, there isn't anything, there aren't any revenue or billing opportunities there with having the, um, also having the, the fire truck there besides the, the ambulance.
They just bill for services, general services. It's not.
Yeah, okay.
There's a difference.
I didn't think there was. I know it's.
It's just one response.
There's a huge, there's a huge bump in the, or not huge, but there's a big bump in the anticipated revenue for EMS and I didn't know if it was.
Don't know of how the BLS system would work, if you recall, does it back up? If there is a way to put a building for that, does that just be like?
I think you need to, you need to get you and Terry and Jack together.
I don't know that answer, but maybe there is a way.
I don't know.
So, I mean, were there any other questions about anything else within this budget other than air packs?
What are we gonna change that line item to?
Yeah, well, that was, I was gonna get the other ones out of the way and then.
Okay, alright.
Are you comfortable with these other line items, Terry?
Uh, I, I believe so. The current rates of things that are going.
Even the repair and maintenance line?
Yes, that's a raised rate.
Okay, I'll bump that up.
You're the only, the only, the only one, the only other one that that falls under the whole category is like the lease purchase, but that's for that truck. Where do I start, put a line item in for my truck that I'm buying five years? Or where does that come from? Where do I put that in?
Yeah.
We're gonna check it that out.
Okay.
Yeah, because it totally comes back with, they may even say, make it a separate line item for capital.
Right.
Capital projects, you know, because it's different than current project and it's.
And then your reserve account.
That, that's one thing because we do our budget differently than what you do yours. I have to know, like, when you had those uniforms and we just said that it was over the budget. Uh, had you told me, I would have paid half of that out of which now I'll make it up.
Well.
But, uh, and the same way with the air packs. If he leaves it in this air pack line item, I have to know when he buys them because I can take that out of my capital investment.
Well, it's good to know.
Unless we, unless we increase his whole budget to cover that. Um, you know, and then we do buy it like that, but. But yeah, depending on how you do it, so if I can take some of that stuff out of, because I have, we figured those uniforms out of my capital investments.
But I need that help to remind me when you go to purchase that stuff, that this is what's going on. Because obviously.
Basically, with the, with all of their actions in the budget, well, then that's you, but I know that the uniforms now I owe you, you know, because I have, that wasn't supposed to be out of the general fund.
No, it was.
We'll take your I O U.
Yeah. I thought it had the I O U.
Well, that's why, that's why we do that calculation.
Yeah.
No, it's.
Sure.
We can make that difference up.
Yeah.
Yeah. So just, you know, a little more communication so that we can make sure that.
And pay our.
Sorry about that.
What about your radios?
Our, uh, what about our radios? We, our radios are running on a fuse like everything else. They were purchased through the county on our grant. A year ago, I don't remember, but right now we're running on.
Stuck in term on council.
We're running on parts. They, they're no longer making the radio anymore. They're no longer making the parts one. We filed two separate grants in the last three years with no end result in it. Went in with other fire departments to try to do it. Went as a county one time and tried to do it. So what, what I'm saying is we're getting ready to buy some radios. So just, when are we gonna buy those radios? The day after the break.
And how much does that cost?
You've got, you've got ten thousand.
Yeah, we put that in there last year within hopes of replacing radios. I think the radios are twenty-seven hundred dollars. My numbers are correct.
Well, then I would buy at least that many out of this year's budget.
If that's a possibility.
Did Ken move that money last year to another line item?
No, he didn't. No, they just changed.
He didn't change the budget at all. There was no increase, no increase.
And how many radios do you have?
Twenty-one. At this.
So you need fifteen?
At this given time, yes.
So can you start buying now?
Yeah, you have almost ten thousand dollars left in that line item.
And next year?
If I.
And we're gonna work together to get this figured out.
If I.
So you can get it done.
Get, get a price so we can figure out how much it's gonna cost. Because those prices were, if we had Kenwood and Motorola, then.
Twenty-seven, fifteen, fifteen.
Prices, that's what I'm shooting in my head.
Right, that's, that's fine. And is it possible?
Fifteen times three, yeah.
So you either make sure everybody's on the same radio system or it doesn't matter.
It'd be the same.
So it doesn't matter if you guys have different radios.
Brand does not.
But would it help down the road if you all have the same radio?
It's forty-five thousand.
Not necessarily.
Just trying to think of, you know.
The same bands, you know, we can talk.
Right. But if you happen to like repair radios.
I think it matters, but one radio repair company is gonna work on Kenwood's, one's gonna work on Motorola's, or one. Is on my, I'll work on both.
I was just thinking, intershaking parts.
Right.
We don't store fires, we see them work. Joyce, is that, are the radios something that you've done reserves for each year or is it just an annual expense? Do you know?
Um.
On the radios.
Do not do those separately. It's just part of the annual budget.
Okay, thank you.
Are these eight hundred radios?
Yes.
And that grant, I believe Terry was my second year on, second term, about ten, eleven years ago. When we did the radios.
Marshall County.
Yeah, it was a big one.
Marshall County, everybody got some.
Might have even been the end of my first term.
Yeah, most of it didn't appear and it wasn't, it wasn't two of our radios.
Yeah.
They had the capability, didn't have to go out and buy.
And we were still a volunteer service at EMS when that grant came through.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's been a while.
I was actually still on the service then, so it hasn't been a while.
I'm not saying that's.
So that's good for your health.
A lot of your problems, though, basically are beyond your control because they're mandated. So that's really where it puts you in the rock and hard spot.
Exactly. What they say we have to have.
What you have to have, and that's, that's really what's kind of put you behind the eight ball in this.
But it's for good reasons, for saving lives.
Well, yeah, yeah.
Protect the firefighters.
Yeah, it's not that, it's not just a, it's not just a regulation.
Right, it's, it's not us thinking.
Well, the regulations are to protect the firefighters.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
So what do you want the radio line item to be? Say that loud, could it?
No, I mean, it needs to.
You need what you need it.
Forty-five grand.
That's if you get fifteen by three, yeah.
That's where I'm at.
Or you want to do like twenty this year as an additional appropriation and twenty-five next year.
Let's make it a ten for this year and get through.
And I can order, I can find a price on radios. I mean, I can buy from what I have in the budget.
And do it, don't put it off.
So we're leaving that at ten thousand?
Let's, well, currently it's at ten thousand. Next. As Jenny was saying, do we up it this year? So we can go ahead and up it next year if everyone's comfortable with that.
Make the twenty twenty-two request thirty-five?
Twenty twenty-two is what.
I, I think it would be thirty-five. If we do ten this year, if we're talking forty-five total. About three thousand a piece.
Is that gonna be thirty?
That gives you fifteen.
How about giving me a price?
I will, I will give them as fast as I possibly can.
And then I'm gonna pencil in thirty-five thousand.
Thirty-five?
We got thirty-five there and thirty-five on that air packs.
Thirty-five on that. What did you put for air packs?
I am, yeah, okay.
Well, I had seventy. I thought it was seventy-one.
Yeah, it was seventy, it was seventy-one and I, I said seventy-five. Yeah, we rounded the seventy-one up to seventy-five.
Alright.
Yeah, but we rounded it up to seventy-five, just to be protection. Seventy-five on air packs. So it's increased now a hundred and ten. Glad Wayne's not here, better than. Anybody else have anything to talk about on fire? Yeah. There goes Wayne's golf cart.
Obviously can see me.
Just, I'm not sure. Will you go down and tell them we changed anything other than the radio? The only thing I have changed is the radios are thirty-five and seventy-five. I mean, the rest of it is the same. Okay.
Sally, you got anything else?
No.
Rich?
Nope, I'm stopped.
William, no. William?
You're Scott the money.
Yeah. All I can say is that he's gonna need to order this stuff.
Right, yeah.
I mean, like the, the air packs, he needs to order them now just to get them in.
That's right, and we don't pay for them, Doug.
And getting, like I said, I, I've already got the guys. I told them to give me the prices and they came back last night with numbers and it was. So give me something so that I can know what they cost, so that, that would add some progress to the already.
Yeah.
We've been working on. The radio, they'll get, that's been two years that we approached that and that's when we tried to file a grant, but the county all the other county fire departments together.
They were up in the twenty-seven hundred range back then, so there was basically three thousand now.
Sure.
So you think that we're gonna do an additional appropriation in twenty twenty-one also for fire?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure, just because. Good thing we raised that golf cart comment fee.
One more checkup.
I don't think Wayne has enough. Right, that makes sense.
I think Wayne's ticket book is full. It's unused.
I bet it is.
Yeah. Unused. Terry, one other thing I got, and maybe I'm the only one that doesn't know. Would you introduce your?
This is Troy, Troy Rager. He is our newest fireman on the department. He's currently going through training and operation. Welcome, maybe, uh, he's done well so far for us and I, and I think that, I think he'll go far.
Good, you're welcome, Troy.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Yeah.
Sorry, I just like to do my part, so that's my mind. Sorry, Troy.
Likewise, likewise.
Anything else I could share, all of the prices for those two things? Anything else I could share? I'll get prices for those two things. We have, I'm gonna be stepping in as fast as I can. Want them all so you guys can know if we buy them when we get them. Cause that may have a lot of appropriations.
Right. Thank you.
Get it solved.
We will.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care.
You have anything else? I think. Yeah, I think we're adjourned until six thirty.